All right, it is six o'clock. I will call the May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. For the record, I note, we do have a quorum with only Supervisor Smith absent. He does send his regrets, but tonight, him and his wife Tammy will be presenting the first annual Logan Smith Memorial Scholarship, which they started in memory of his son, who they lost. So I would ask that you keep Jamie and Tammy in your prayers. Tonight, we have Pastor Richie Johnson from the church, First Church Withfield, who provide our invocation. If you would please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Johnson?
Hope everybody's having a blessed day today. If you bow your head and close your eyes. Father, in the name of Jesus, I pray your blessing on this county. Lord, let your favors just shine upon us. Lord, I pray that you would give us justice. Lord, keep us in your mercy. Keep us in your fairness. Bless our leaders. Bless the citizens, Lord. Help us to work together, always in unity, always in peace. And we pray for the Smith family and their absence. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
First item on our agenda is Citizens Time. As always, I'll call you up. You have three minutes to speak. The first person we have signed up is Ms. Linda Myers. Ms. Myers?
Yes, good evening, everybody. I had notified a couple people. We had presented on two occasions resolutions to support With County parents' objections to these porn books that we have in our school system. And last week, Delegate Tim Anderson, who's also a lawyer, he announced a major legal victory. The Virginia Beach Circuit Court found probable cause that these books, in fact, some of the books that we have here, are obscene and should be restricted, restricted viewing by minors. And we would like to know if, in fact, you are working on that, getting the resolution and supporting the parents' objection to these pornographic books. Okay? So that was the Virginia Beach Circuit Court issued that directive last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Next person signed up is Mr. Jerry Blevins. Mr. Blevins?
Due to running out of time at the last Board of Supervisors meeting, I will continue where I left off. Since being released from jail, I've had two hearings in General District Court. They were very interested in involving my attorney going to a room on the left front corner of the courtroom, where he meets the District Prosecutor and the West County Sheriff Major Clam. They didn't discuss what to do, apparently. And then my last hearing, on May third, two thousand and twenty-two, they had two officers to give me. The latter one was most interesting and went as follows. If I would agree to good behavior for a year, the prosecutor would then drop the obstruction of justice charge. That would imply that I had done something wrong and would allow the police to keep my personal property for another year. When the police brought on my property with long guns and didn't announce the presence, and the only way I knew it wasn't the police is by calling nine-one-one and telling the operator that an intruder is on my property, and she replies, "It is a police, not to shoot," whereas she then states, "The police were there to talk to me." Coming to my place with long guns is not a good way to communicate with me. Instead of lying about what they were there for and announce themselves upon arrival, would have been much more rational to just come on otherwise. Once I was arrested, however, the police would have avoided a false charge of attempted murder by immediately searching my camera footage, my security camera footage, not having Pauline nor specified the facts she swore to, dimensions, the credibility of the emergency custody order from the With County Service Department, having the Mount Rogers Community Service Report as well as the With County Community Hospital Report, neither specify any need for further cure on my part, supports my claim that an ECO arrest was not warranted in the first place, and there wasn't a need for police interfering. Since my last speech to the With County Board of Supervisors, I have had problems with my neighbor since she has been moving or losing lug nuts on my Zuki car, making loud noises, and lately turning my phone ringer down to where it will not ring. By the police not investigating this neighbor, but instead of chilling down, the DSS complained about the neighbor. It raises a lot of questions, but eventually will be answered. Having my case reviewed by several attorneys and all agree, and there is a civil rights case involved, it's quite helpful. My speeches to the Board of Supervisors is not solely for public knowledge, but a legal requirement before in the civil cases can be filed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. All right, the next person, Ashley Stewart. Ms. Stewart?
Hello. I am here to address an ongoing situation that has happened for multiple years with the local treasurer's office. In two thousand and twenty, my husband and I sole owned a two thousand and six Toyota Sequoia. Somehow, the treasurer's office mixed it up and got my mother linked to it. Every year I go in to pay, there is one vehicle that is always just in my husband's name only. The other vehicles are in both of our names. I am never given a receipt. I am always refused. For the past three years, I have been. The past three years have been an absolute headache for me to be able to go and pay my taxes, to the point, I don't even want to go in the office anymore. My mother's name was linked to that. My husband had a hold on his tags. I had a hold on mine. She had a hold on hers. She has never been on this vehicle or cosigned a vehicle to her name. We're still not quite sure how that mix-up happened. Same thing happened last year. I went in, paid my taxes, to my understanding. Ms. Gwen told me everything was paid. Get a call in late August from a friend that worked there and said, "Hey, that bill was misplaced again. You need to hurry up and get in here. A hold is being placed on your stuff at the DMV." Had to leave from school, from getting my kids to go take care of that, and then go back to Spiller and pick up. Yesterday, I went to pay my taxes. I was refused a receipt again. I paid seven hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. I have every bill here and all the receipts. I was refused a receipt. I asked to speak to Ms. Gwen. She came out with the rudest arrogant attitude I have ever dealt with from a county official. She looked at me in the face and said, "Oh, I remember who you are." She and I went back and forth about the receipt. If there was not so many mix-ups and mistakes in our county treasurer's office, there would be no need for she to know who I was for the past three years. I got to looking at my taxes, too. I have both papers here that I got mailed, the paper she printed me yesterday. I was overcharged five dollars and sixty cents. I called in yesterday and recorded the call. The employee there was so nice to me and kind. Her name was Carolyn. She tried to help me and resolve the issue. Ms. Gwen would not come to the phone to me to try and resolve this issue in a personable manner for over twenty minutes, and I was at work and couldn't stay on the phone any longer. Yesterday, the employee that was trying to help me, Ms. Gwen, put her hand in her face and pushed her away from the counter to keep her from helping me. I don't know what to do. I was charged twenty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents yesterday to pay with a debit card, and I'm also having to pay thirty dollars a pop at my bank to get bank statements to take to them to show them what I've paid them. And this is to the point, I can't deal with this a fourth year. This is costing us hundreds of extra dollars, and it should not be this kind of a fit to pay my taxes as a With County citizen. And I do have the recorded calls or any copies that any of my board members would like to have, if they would like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Mr. Baird? Sorry about that. She's left her phone number on the signing sheet. We follow up with her.
I did. We spoke earlier today, and I will, I will follow up with her and speak with Ms. Gwen as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all we have signed up for Citizens Time, so I'll close Citizens Time. The next item on our agenda is the payment of invoices. Each board member has received a copy of the invoices in your board package. I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Terry and a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any invoice any board member wants to pull out and/or discuss? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our previous meeting of May the tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. So have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Mr. Burnet. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
I will abstain, Mr. Terry, because I attended by phone.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on our agenda is old business. We have the VDOT Secondary Six-Year Plan Resolutions. Mr. Baird?
Yes, sir. You all held your public hearing and approved the six-year plan. Mr. Fowler has presented us with some resolutions, and I'll welcome him to join and help answer any questions that we've got. But the first resolution is two thousand and twenty-two oh-six, and that is basically the approval of the plan and the priority list.
All right. The first resolution is two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-six. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
Two thousand and twenty-two oh-seven is the resolution, changing the construction priority order of Doe Run and Millers Creek Road in said plan.
Right. I'll entertain a motion to approve two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-seven.
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that one?
Just for the record, I will. Mr. Smith is not here, but Mr. Smith is the board member that's from his district, and he did request at the previous meeting for that order to change.
So we should vote it down?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved. Then we have two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-eight.
Andy, I think this is just confirming the, the, the new allocations and the updating pricing of the plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-eight.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I, I mean, Mr. Horn, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Second. Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-nine.
This is the resolution to designate the Connors Valley Road section as rural rustic road, which is what the funding is based upon constructing to those standards. This is standard. We have done this for all of our roads recently. It's basically saying, and Mr. Fowler can jump in here, but basically, it is a rural rustic road, and we do not see growth occurring on that road that would lead it to such not be a rural rustic road.
Right. So we will finish it by rural rustic standards to a surface treatment, hard surface finish.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-nine.
So moved.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved.
And the last one is two thousand and twenty-two ten for the Foster Falls Road, the same designation of rural rustic.
Entertain a motion to approve two thousand and twenty-two dash ten.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Have you heard from Mrs. Mayberry?
Not yet.
Not yet? I'll swing by and talk to her.
Yeah. We had talked, actually, we had spoken with her. One of my staff had. But she directed them to her son, and we haven't been able to contact him yet. So if you, if you could, that'd be great.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So approved. Anything else on the VDOT resolutions?
That covers all of them, sir.
Where do we have the, Ms. Collins gave me the SmartScale application. Do we need to?
That's under my agenda. I don't know if Mr. Fowler's involved with that, but we, we can discuss it now if you'd like while he's here.
I figured.
Yeah.
So he could leave. I didn't know if you wanted to stay or not.
This is under, under my report, item B. This is the revised plan. Martha will bring up the map on page one thirty-four.
Yes, and I, I know Pam Heath has been working with you on that.
Yeah.
So I think everything's moving forward.
This, basically, if you all recall, we had a work session with VDOT, March or April, and looked at exit seventy-seven and exit eighty, and one of the designs that came out was, and in lieu of the spooey spider-looking designs, was the J-ramps. I'm not asking for you all to take action on this tonight. I wanted you all to review it. In order for, what they're looking at doing is making application in SmartScale for this. We would need to adopt a resolution, I want to say it's by August first on the SmartScale, in order to do so, for them to have as, in, in the application package. We would also need to make certain language about it, as in our comprehensive plan, which has been revised. Note that this is conceptual only. I have, have indicated that the southern J-ramps probably would be better served shifting to the east a little bit and having less impact on maybe the truck stop and, and the county property right there. Wanted to share it with you all. Mr. Kinsler went ahead and prepared the resolution. If you all would like representatives from, and I'll say Bristol, they are the ones primarily assisting with this, if you would like for them to come to a future board meeting to review and discuss with you before we take any action, that would be fine. I welcome for you all to send, send me any questions or concerns, and we can share them with them as well. The advantage of this, it, it has limited impact on our existing businesses and is probably more likely to receive funding and affordability than what the spooey bridge is in the process.
My only concern slash question is, is that roundabout?
I was going to ask the same thing.
Those are two roundabouts at seventy-seven, north and south. Those are roundabouts. At the end of the J-ramps, they were studied, well, both of them were studied. The exits were studied for signaling or roundabouts, and roundabouts scored better on those. At the J-ramps, they were both studied, and signals were recommended at the end of the J-ramps.
I just, I have some grave concerns about roundabouts, especially right there.
So I have seen those off some of the North Carolina exits. I guess it might be a new thing they're doing there, because they look, they all look new. I don't like roundabouts, but they're, they're actually not as bad as I thought they would be, I'll say.
I'm growing to like them a little more than what I used to.
Yeah. I mean, they work.
I'm just envisioning a road tractor going around them. I'm just envisioning a road tractor going around.
Well, that, and that's
I assume they'll be large roundabouts.
Yeah. Exit one, exit one-fifty in, is, is the only one I know right off of an interstate right now. But if, exit one-fifty just north of Roanoke has one right now. Now, it's, they redesigned that whole exit, and it's, it's not, it's sort of north of the interchange, but that's the closest one around here that I'm aware of in Virginia that's got a roundabout right off of, of an exit. It may be the only one on the east one for all I know. But would you all like for me to have someone come and make a presentation on this and review these plans with you?
That's, that'd be my wish. I don't know what the rest of the board.
Andy may be able to answer the question, but I don't, I think it's more been in Bristol design.
Yeah, this has been handled by Blake Ailer in, in Bristol, and he did offer to, to come and meet with you guys and.
Yeah.
The, the problem with, the, the problem I see with roundabouts is, is not local people, because local people get used to, you know, it's, it's like where I go on vacation every year. There's roundabouts the first year I flipped out. Never been in one after, you know, I spent my five minutes on that ride to figure out how to get out of it, you know. Now, every year, I know where they're at. I expect it to find. But when you mix that much traffic from different areas, that, that's my worry. It's not, you know, more local people figured out exit eighty, you know, with, with all the lights and stuff up there. But I'm just worried about, you know, you've got so many travelers from different states. But that's my concern. And it's, it's already a congested intersection, and VDOT won't get the blame forward. If it makes it worse, we will.
Right.
That's right. Funny how that works.
Yeah.
It would be, I think it'd be nice, because the size, I know you said they'd have to be large, but those aren't really that large of areas, are they? I mean, I'm sure it would fit better than I can imagine it, but.
Well, part of it is it goes where the, where the ramps currently are. Part of that helps out, called it shift down into some of that area.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Mr. Kinsler, he had that same question. He was, you know, he's, he's an engineer. He's pulling out and measuring the diameter and of what, what the inside is, what the outside is, looking at it to see. I'll, I'll work with Mr. Ailer and others and see if we can get them to come to one of our upcoming meetings just.
And if they can bring us a more detailed map.
Yeah, and we'll bring it. That's, like I said, I didn't want action tonight, but it's, if we are going to put an application in, and obviously, just like all the rest of these, if you put them in, funding's six years out before you start construction.
All right. So we'll just pass that by for now, I assume?
Yeah.
Anything else for Mr. Fowler?
Does he want complaints?
Yeah, while, while I'm here, hit me.
I was in the process of typing an email a while ago, and I heard you, and I was like, whoa.
Save you the trouble here.
I just had a complaint just a few minutes ago about potholes on St. Peters Road between Fleming Road and Cripple Creek Road. And I was also told that, I don't know if you know where Jerry Porter lives on, in that section, but they said the road is falling away.
Between Fleming and what was it?
Cripple Creek Road.
And since Mr. Smith's here, I, I know we've discussed this several times, and I know he's recently broadened up. Is there any movement or, or any funding available out there where we can get a crosswalk at Fort Chisel High School?
Yeah, we talked about that today. Stephen contacted me, and we're going to have to get with Pam and look into different funding options, because basically, since that's an intersection of two primary routes, there's going to be quite a bit of design that's going to have to go into, to the full-blown safety aspect of what, what would take place by putting a crosswalk there, so.
I mean, it's, and I don't know how often you go down there in the afternoons, but, you know, it was needed fifteen years ago when I was SRO down there. You know, kids run across the street going to Glinny's, and it's just.
Glinny's East.
I mean, Burger Express.
We knew what you meant.
We, we do miss Glinny's.
Got a heck of a cross-country team that runs the street.
That's what I was going to say.
And Mr. Kinsler, he, he was talking to one of our firms on opening the contract because we felt like it's, the limited maintenance money we get is not going to take care of it. And one of the firms does a lot of traffic-related projects, and there are safe route to school monies and intersection money and things like that. And we'll prob, like you said, it's, it's going to take more than just, and I mean, no offense to anybody, paint stripes with crosswalks, and it's going to need to be to push buttons on the lights and all that stuff. So Mr. Kinsler has been talking with engineering about possibly opening a contract to, to bring back, to look into, to see, let them study and see what pots of money they may be able to assist us with funding for that.
I would not put the signs in the middle of the road like the Henry Street tried.
Right.
That's probably a good idea.
Build a bridge. Crosswalk bridge.
Yeah. VDOT wouldn't let us build at their standards, would it?
Four before, two before.
Fort Chisel spooey.
Yeah, certainly. I, I have one, Mr. Fowler, I had a citizen, Ellis Hunley. He's on Pepper's Ferry somewhere, and there's apparently a section of potholes, and he said it's bad enough when the trucks come through. It rattles his whole house when they come through.
Which road was that?
Pepper's Ferry. Yes, sir.
Do you know if he's between here and the park or the other side of the park?
I think he's, I think he's potentially on the other side of the park, Mr. Baird, but I won't swear to that.
I know they, y'all done some paving out there recently.
Yeah, between the park and, and the town limits.
I think it might, I'm not sure, but it must be past the park, because I ride that part a lot, and I haven't noticed.
Yes, sir. I'm almost positive he's down below, not too far down below, but he gets a lot of the truck traffic, he said.
All right. Check into that as well.
Thank you very much, sir.
No problem.
I've got there between post office on Route one hundred and Foster Falls Road, those pines are still, I don't know if they're.
Right. I'm, I'm having that looked at. Basically, they're off the right-of-way, but, but the limbs obviously are grown, grown out into the right-of-way, and it's hard to see around. So I'm going to see if we can get our roadside vegetation contractor to trim those back.
And I appreciate the pothole work y'all done on Stony Ford. I've noticed a bunch of campers out there, and I know they appreciate it, because when they go through them curves, that's where the wheels on the camper were hitting.
Yeah, and they're still working their way toward Mr. Smith's area. He was looking at Lots Gap Road and, and Pepper's Ferry and around exit seventy-seven there. We're going to do some.
Don't worry about Lots Gap Road. It slows people down.
Right.
One in particular?
Yeah. We call their speed though to lots of speeding cars. Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Fowler?
I just want to thank him. I called him about a drainage problem, and the guys went out there, and I got, I actually got one of the phone calls you liked to get, because the guy called back, and he said, "They did a great job." He said, "They picked up all the gravel and everything out of his yard," so.
And I will say, I know that they've started mowing, and that's much appreciated.
Yes. Moving forward with the mowing, so anything else?
No. Just thanks for everything.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you all.
Have a good evening.
All right. We'll jump back on the old business. Got the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget. We need to set the public hearing for June the fourteenth, and that is for the school board budget and the fiscal year twenty-three With County budget. So I'll entertain a motion to set those public hearings on June the fourteenth. Is it six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
At six o'clock?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion on the, those dates? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dates are so set. Anything else under old business, Mr. Baird?
I do not have anything else under old business. We still have appointments, MRPDC and WCC. Just keeping that in everybody's mind. And I'm still trying to assist you all in coming up with some names for there.
All right. We'll move into reports. First, we have Treasurer, Ms. Gwen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, ma'am.
I don't have a lot for tonight, so I'll try to make it short and sweet. Okay, included in your board packet was your April financial reports, or the treasurer's report and the, the finance director's report. For month ending of April thirtieth, the consolidated account contained in. For month ending of April thirtieth, the consolidated account contained an account balance of eighty-eight million nine hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. And included in that was the general fund balance of forty-seven million three hundred forty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars. And to be honest, that's all I have for you tonight. To give you those two numbers that you could already see.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Gwen?
We've kind of been delayed with a few hiccups system-wise, so I don't don't have a lot going on right now other than trying to get caught up from those few few things, so.
All right, well, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have commissioner revenue, Ms. Ball.
Hello.
Hello, ma'am.
Um, I just wanted to do an update on the reassessment. They have had approximately six hundred properties be appealed. And they hope to have all of those resolved with letters either changing or not changing in the next two weeks. I don't have anything else unless somebody has any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Ball?
You said they hope to have the letters. Have they started those at all?
Yes.
Okay, so some people have already got?
Hmm, they may have.
Okay, gotcha.
And Mr. Bear, the the Board of Equalization, how long do they have to, how's that set up?
There, I don't remember off the top of my head. They're appointed, they're trained, they're ready to go.
Right.
There is a timeframe and I don't remember it that that they don't meet after the Board of Assessors has met.
Thirty days.
I want to say thirty days, but they can start scheduling appointments and things like that to come in after that thirty days. But I'll ask Commissioner to work with me and we'll get an updated email out to you all of that process in case any of the citizens are contacting you all.
Well, I was gonna say, we also need to put it out on the website and all that, just to let people know the process.
And it has to be advertised in the newspaper, too. And it says the libraries. I mean, are we gonna?
We'll just stick a notice at the library, that'd be fine.
Is is that a lot of appeals or is that just, is that average for a reassessment?
Well, it's six hundred properties out of nineteen thousand eight hundred and some. That's not too bad, I wouldn't think. I was expecting more.
I was expecting higher.
I was getting to say that.
That's why I was asking if if people had started to get their letters or not.
No, I I think they have sent out a few letters because they try to work them daily, but there's been a lot of emails, so.
All right, does anybody have anything else for Ms. Ball? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next is the sheriff. Sheriff's not here because he's also attending Fort Chisel ceremony at Fort Chisel. So we'll move on to new business. We have the consent calendar that everybody received in their packet. I'll approve or entertain a motion to approve the consent calendars presented.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Chairman, sir? I apologize, my computer is down here at IT for works. I have not seen the consent calendar. I just wanted to confirm that there's not any funding going to the Apex in there, is it, Mr. Bear? I have not had a chance to look at it.
No, sir. It's it's the consent, it's not the funding, the quarterly funding.
Okay.
If that's what you're thinking about.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to double check because I did not have a chance to review.
All right.
That's all I've got, I'm sorry.
Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions about the consent calendar? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. Next item on our agenda is staff reports. Assistant County Administrator, Mr. Hankins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's not a lot in my report tonight. There is one action item. Staff request that you amend the current year budget and appropriate seven thousand dollars from reserves for the Commissioner of the Revenues' cloud hosting and data backup and recovery services for the new mass appraisal system. This is one of the things that was considered in the contract that we reviewed with you last year. For those of you who were on the board at the time, it is though unfortunate that your then-new Assistant County Administrator forgot to ask for those funds to be put in the budget for current year. So I would ask that you make up for my mistake at this time.
That's a very honest request.
Yes.
Stephen would have threw you under the bus.
All right. Transparent and accountable, Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion to amend and appropriate seven thousand dollars for reserves for the cloud hosting services for the Commissioner of the Revenues' mass appraisal system.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horny. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook?
Aye.
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 So approved. Since you started off like that, go ahead.
Just a couple of notes that I'll I'll pull out to highlight. Speedo's new pumper tanker has been delivered. That's the last of the fire equipment. It was included in the borrow that you all agreed to do in current year budget funds. So we are complete with that project. We have signed our contracts with ProCom and we're trying to finish Blue Line. There were a couple of signature lines that were left off the contract that have been added so that all parties are represented. The sheriff has it on his desk now. Once it gets signed, we'll have Mr. Bear sign and we'll be complete there. And then I did note that yesterday was the first meeting of the Regional Improvement Commission. We did not formally adopt bylaws or elect officers yesterday, but we did have a pretty wide-ranging discussion about what funding priorities should be. There were some different perspectives on on how we should use those funds, but at the end of the day, the larger consensus was that this will be a good opportunity to spend funds in support of EMS for public safety purposes. A lot of counties are in the same boat we're in, having a hard time finding and retaining emergency medical technicians or even retaining their rescue squads in some form, so this is a good opportunity to supplement budgets and use those funds for public safety as state code directs us to do. So as we continue to have those meetings and set those priorities, I'll keep you updated. Our next meeting is June thirtieth during the day, so I could have an update for you when we meet to close out the budget year that night. There's a lot of excitement about how the gaming tax funds will be spent, but none of us have a good idea yet of what those numbers really are, so it's likely that it will be close to a year before we receive those funds and are able to to budget for them, so. Just keep that in mind. Yeah, we do have some potentially dollars out there, but we don't know how much or when we'll have them.
And I will, on the talking about the EMS, I've been keeping up with Smith County's some of their budget priorities, and I know we discussed it with Rory Tree running such a large area in Smith County, and they are looking at building EMS station in Atkins. So that'll that'll help relieve some stress off the rescue squad in Rory Tree and.
They did budget twenty-five hundred dollars for.
I was gonna say, but they did budget twenty-five hundred dollars to the rescue squad, so.
And one further note, that's not on here. Chairman Ball and Sheriff Foster and I will be going up for a special call meeting of the New River Regional Jail Authority on Thursday. They have a personnel committee that was appointed in January that has recommended a new superintendent. Superintendent Winston having tended his resignation. So at that point, we'll have the opportunity to review the employment agreement that they've prepared for the candidate and offer any further perspectives and direction.
Which will include getting some trustees to pick up trash.
Absolutely. That's it for my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hankins. Mr. Bear?
Uh, yes, first item on the agenda is last year in preparing the budget, Mr. Hankins did not request two hundred dollars for the medical, no. Medical examiner is always just, we budget usually about five hundred dollars every year. We have gotten more cases this year that they cost us twenty dollars for every case that comes in that we have to pay our share on. Staff has reviewed it and requested amending and appropriate two hundred dollars to the budget, which should cover through the remainder of the year.
Entertain a motion to amend and appropriate the budget for thirty-five oh three medical examiner by two hundred dollars. So moved. Have a motion by Ms. Horny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved.
And just, I'll just give you an update on a few items, and if you all have any questions, be glad to answer them. But all of the infrastructure projects are continuing to proceed right now. Thrash is represented is here. We're meeting weekly with them on the Lots Gap tank and water line and on the wastewater plant. Everything is moving along there. The contract's awarded for the force main and pump station and that is coming along. Matt covered the rail in his. The rail has been awarded. Add on top of it, STS and AgroCell Lot one B, the previously announced project, that is now ready to move ahead. Mr. Manley and I met with five or six representatives of AgroCell last week. We are reviewing the plat to create the thirty-five acre tract for them, but they are ready to get started on their construction up there and are beginning to submit their paperwork for their stormwater approvals and all that. We will have a short sewer line to run up to it, but other than that, all of the utilities are there and in place. If you've been out to Progress Park this past week, we have a stoplight out there. It's a temporary stoplight, but the gas company on the lower end of Elite Trinkle from Gator Lane down to Lot twenty-four, they've got a, I don't know what size line laid out on the road there that the gas company's installing, and they have one of those traffic control lights there at the road and at the end of it, but all of that is going in. The JIDA is going, was going to be getting some pictures of, some drone pictures for us to share with you all of the construction and earth moving that's going on out there. Once it stops raining long enough or once the wind stops blowing long enough for them to get the drone photo, drone up there, we'll have some updated photos to share with you there. Attended the CRYFA meeting this week, which is the Crossroads Regional Industrial Facility Authority that we share. And maybe Ms. Lawson was the one who made a motion to declare the dividend, but we came back with our two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar dividend check to deposit from our from our cross, from our CRYFA project. And we've asked Mr. Manley to look at the Go Virginia funding and thus have a meeting coming up to look at a potential another CRYFA project using some of these Go Virginia funds as potential grants to help grade another lot out in the park. But if y'all have any questions about any items or anything, be glad to try to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Bear? All right, county attorney, Mr. Forzin?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report at this time unless anybody has any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Forzin? Thank you, sir. Move on to Board of Supervisors' time. Mr. Terry?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Horny?
Sorry, you got ahead of me. I had a, the fire department was talking about the dryer that they have for their turnout gear. They need it rewired or something because it keeps blowing fuses or blowing breakers, so can we have maintenance check on that, please? And also the pothole in the front of the firehouse that where we dug up the water line and have filled the back of gravel, can we possibly get that patched? I believe that was all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Horny. Ms. Lawson?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Burnett?
I have nothing at this time.
Mr. Cook?
Could I, could we go to page one twenty-six of our packet? And and I, number four, the last bullet there talks about, you know, when we might start seeing some progress by our next meeting. I'd like to have a date, not just when it's up and running. I'd like to know when it's going to be up and running. Says once Tyler is fully implemented, we will, we will start working on it. I need a date.
On the ACH payments, those you're talking about?
Delinquent accounts, page one twenty-six.
Yep.
Are you talking about the last word? Talks about the ACH payments?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the?
Yeah. The ACH payments, implementing the ACH payments and all that, we're actually having a meeting tomorrow morning to talk about.
Actually, Mr. Cook, that falls under my jurisdiction. I've been waiting on this same program for five years. And I've been told I couldn't progress with anything till UV went live. I'm now ready since UV's live. We have a meeting in June with the Tyler people. We're basically being force-fed their program to, because nothing else is compatible with me and us now. We're seven years behind on updates, so we've got an update to a whole, basically a whole new system is what it's going to come down to, even though it's the same thing. So we're going to be going through a demo in June on their program and once we can get get through that, that'll also bring on Citizen Self-Serve that will allow people to not only see utility bills online, they'll be able to see tax bills online and pay from that portal. It'll eventually bring on animal licenses, building permits, everything we have for everybody to be able to pay online, but it'll offer the ability to to pay by credit card online or by e-check and it will allow, they don't specifically call it ACH. They call it something else and that was part of a class that I had attended last week with their conference that I can't remember what they call it, but it's something along that line. But it's not going to be, from my understanding, the ACH as we know it, that we, you know, allow our cell phone provider to ACH our account every month for our cell phone bill, it's going to be a fee-based charge. You're going to have to pay a fee each month for them to withdraw because it's going to be considered like an e-check payment, but those are questions that I have to get answered whenever we have that demo next month, so. I'm hoping once we have that, we can move things along and and get that going, but I've been waiting five years, so I'm right there with you.
Well, and not so much that, but really what I'm concerned with is this last little, and we can resume debt collection activities at that time? And it's, we're talking about water, correct? So that's that's what I want to know. What if it's her, if it's if it's her deal, then why is it causing water not to be able to go start doing their collections?
Well, what she said, it's all working together.
Different than their delinquent collections, and I'll let Mr. Bear address that because I don't have anything to do with their delinquent collections.
The goal obviously is to set up the the ACH payments and like Ms. Gwen attended some classes last week at a conference she attended on this in the process. Our goal was to also get that set up as quickly as possible. Ms. Gwen wants that, we want that, getting that set up is a priority. So that way it, you know, the citizens want it because they don't like coming in here and it will help with with the staffing time because you're not taking the payments manually, you're not taking the payments over the phone in the process. But I understand your questions on the, and what Mr. Chris indicated there is doing all of that frees up the additional staff time, so that is why it's critical to get that implemented as quickly as possible, and I will, I will get you a date on the timeframes of those items.
I guess from my way she sounds, July before we start?
Uh, we don't know.
I doubt it will be then. In the conversation that we had last week, I really stressed I would like to see this up and going before we go into this next. before we go into this next tax season, because we get overwhelmed with mail and phone payments and people coming in, we can't get everything going. So I, I'm pushing to have this done by fall before tax bills go out, I don't know how quick of a turnaround it is, because about everything seems to be now with Tyler, since we've actually got our foot in the door and talking to our sales rep, everything seems to be on a ninety-day turnaround, is that more or less your understanding as we, it seems like once you get a demo, they'll say, okay, well, we can proceed, but it'll be ninety days before we can do this, and it just drags out, but I'm, I'm pushing to get this in before tax bills go out in October. I would like to see it in place by the first of September, if at all possible, but I'm, I'm really pushing for the online side of it, because
We're looking at.
we desperately need it, but.
We're looking at a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, and that goes up every month.
Well, that's the judgment that's been received. That's the judgment that he's received to date. That's what she's gone to court already and got. Okay, yeah. But you are correct, it continues to go up, because there is interest assigned by the judge that goes up with it. But those, those have been received, their judgment's setting out there, but you know, it's still difficult to collect on judgments, but those have gone to court.
Can we get an update on what is owed?
Yeah.
On the delinquent account, we haven't had one of those for a while.
No.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Cook.
You know, that's, that's what I, that, that, and that's my point, it just keeps getting pushed out and pushed out and pushed out, and I'm, I'm ready for some answers, I mean, it's, it's been pushed long enough.
Anything else, Mr. Cook?
No, sir.
Do me a favor, don't let me forget to go back to buildings and grounds, I just realized. All I have is, I was looking at Mr. Hankins' report under picture Speedwell's fire truck, and I talked to Gus Kinsler earlier, and I hate, he wasn't here, because he told me that he got to drive it on their first call Sunday, but he wouldn't tell me how long he'd slept in it waiting on a call. I know Gus had waited patiently for that new truck.
And I should have panned a little further to the left, because you can actually see Gus working in that picture, he's the one feeding the hose off the truck.
Stephanie and AJ put some on Facebook, I actually seen that, so, alright, and because of my old eyes, let me go back to Buildings and Grounds Committee report.
The Building and Grounds Committee met on May sixteen, twenty twenty-two, and makes the following recommendations. Number one, to amend and appropriate three hundred thousand for the public safety radio upgrades, project deposit from reserves to nine zero 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 dash four seven zero two three two.
Alright, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Second is to amend and appropriate twenty-five thousand six hundred twenty-four dollars to four three zero four three dash four seven zero zero four zero for additional DSS doors and locks contingent upon confirmation of DSS state funding for the project.
Mr. Barrett, you wanna explain that one with the state funding part?
Yeah, basically, they're, they're wanting to add some doors and some locks. The DSS offices indicated that they can be able to request reimbursement on that, and even if it's at the eighty-five fifteen percent reimbursement level, it is still worthwhile to get the eighty-five percent of that covered out of it, so as long as DSS receives authorization, which they should, because it is a safety concern to do so, this will give them another door, and then for, that door and three other doors will be put with swipe cards to limit access, so their employees only can have access down those hallways.
Alright, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Third item is to amend and appropriate a hundred thousand for Staff Street Transportation Service District four one zero zero dash four seven zero zero six seven for the road construction project.
Alright, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second, is there any questions or discussion about that recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved, anything else from Buildings and Grounds?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, anything else to come before the board, Mr. Barrett?
I do not have any additional items, Mr. Chairman.
Um, entertain a motion to recess until Tuesday, May the thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, at six P M for our real estate tax rate public hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett, is any questions on that date? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we're now in recess.